A little housekeeping, for those of you that don't know. The emergency exit is in the rear corner of the room. The assembly point is on the far side of the car park. Toilets are at the end of the corridor on the right. There is an accessible toilet at the right of the lift. Help yourselves, as I think you've already done so, to teas and coffees during the meeting. You're most welcome. Tonight, Peter will clerk. Laura, Shaun and Rachel will manage minutes, questions board, participant settings and the IT generally. The meeting is being recorded and we are live streaming to our YouTube channel. For those councillors attending via Zoom, please use the yellow hand. For anyone else, ask questions through the queue enabled. Thank you. First item, any apologies received?
We've had apologies from Nick, Nick Dove, that's Mark Dorrington and Sarah Butler.
And we accept those apologies, please. They're under proposing and second.
Is that unanimous?
Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
Just a quick follow up on that. There are a few other apologies, I think, winging their way in electronically that you're probably aware of.
Thank you. Yes, I did make the request that councillors need to actually either email Paul or Laura for those to be actually recorded in the minutes of the meeting. Thanks, Andy. Next, declarations of councillors' interests. Do we have any? Anne.
Hello. Yes, I'm a director of the Froome Independent. And I know it's mentioned a couple of times in the report for agenda item four. So I'm just declaring that other registrable interest.
Thank you very much, Anne. And next item, approval of the minutes of the last meeting held on the 15th of November 2023. I don't think there are any matters arising if anyone has any questions at all. Okay, can we approve those, please? Ben approving Steve second.
Okay, so that's a majority.
Okay, I'm very pleased to say for the next item, we have Emma, Simon and Poppy, welcome. And as you'll find out very shortly, they are from Wise Children. And looking forward to your presentation, please.
So.
Can you press the button on the green?
Got it. So I'm Emma Rice. I'm the artistic director of Wise Children and that gave you a little flavour of our work. And this is the cherry on two of the most exciting weeks of my life. Because I'm here talking to Froome Town Council. And we have just opened our, it's no joke, we've just opened a venue in the old Portway Methodist Church, which we've called the Lucky Chance. But I cannot give you the end of the story without giving you the beginning. So my name is Emma Rice, I'm a theatre director. I ran Nihai Theatre in Cornwall for many years. And then in, for a brief interlude, left Nihai after 20 years and ran Shakespeare's Globe in London, where I was controversially kicked out. There's no other way of saying it by the board for being too radical. And that left me, what year was it, Poppy? 2017, it left me on a, on the edge of a cliff. And that's really rare in the arts. I had a fantastic career, you're always planning ahead, you always know what you're going to do. But I had this big moment where I thought, there's nothing in front of me. What am I going to do with everything that I've achieved? And the answer was pretty simple, which is I wanted to create a touring theatre company. I've never been able to freelance. I've always been an independent artist by nature and always wanted to make work on my own terms. I really had to decide, do I want a building or do I want a company? And I decided on a company and we created Wise Children. We had an amazing first four years of trading. We are a touring company, we tour nationally, internationally and locally. But I wanted a home. There's, nothing I do matters unless it's about where I make it and who I make it with. I live in Froome, I live on Willow Vale. And this town is amazing. It has the heart and soul and independent spirit that chimes so strongly with who I am and what I want to do. And we started looking for a building. We talked to Rachel, we talked to Peter, we talked about many different things in Froome that were quite ambitious and were going to take quite a long time. And then the Portway Chapel came up for sale. And I remember looking around it with Poppy and I said, I really, really want this. And she said, so do I. And we managed to get the sale. We bought the building just over a year ago. And we've been using it, which is what my plan was, to teach in and to rehearse in. But that wasn't enough, I wanted to perform in it as well. So this, I want to say this week, but it was last week, wasn't it? We haven't quite opened. Last Friday, we opened our doors to friends and family for an open dress rehearsal. On Saturday, we opened to our neighbours from Alexandra Road. And this week, we have been playing to amazing school groups and community groups that Jess Frankham has helped us meet. Come on, Poppy, tell us who they are. Valis First School.
Thank you very much. We got Valis, we had Valis First School in today, we've got St John's and another one that Avanti in tomorrow. And we also had groups from Purple Elephant. We had the Froome Welcome Hub, lots of families from the Froome Welcome Hub. We had the Home School Network and the Froome Learning Partnership, all brought groups. And it was just an absolute delight to see the show with lots of eight, nine, 10 year olds watching it.
So it's been amazing. I feel pretty heady with the excitement of it all. The show is beautiful, it's a show that I made a few years ago and have remade in Shakespeare's Globe at Bristol Old Vic and now for Froome. And this is what Wise Children has been looking for, which is a home. We're still an international award winging company. My technical director here, Simon Baker, is an Olivier and Tony award winning sound designer, but is here in Froome renovating this chapel for our neighbours and for the art that we're going to make here. So it feels that we've really put down roots. Speaking today to you is really saying hello. We're here, we're not going anywhere, we're going to make work here, we're going to take it around the world. But we want to embed ourselves in Froome. Miro once said that to be truly universal, you have to be truly local. And that is what we believe in, is what we're doing. And we're really looking forward to working in partnership with all of you and with all the people that we have yet to meet. But it really does feel like the beginning, we're feeling giddy with excitement. The school kids today were amazing. They raised the roof on the Portway Chapel. And I think about all the prayers that have been said in that room. And now I feel that we're saying small prayers to the theatre gods and saying, we're going to keep making friends, keep making communities and keep making art, which is the lifeblood of what we do at Wise Children.
Thank you, Emma. It, it sounds like you've already made a really great positive impression in Froome, particularly to young people. And I would say that you are pretty much embedded. And on a personal note, I'm really looking forward to Saturday night. Any comments or questions anybody would like to put? Lisa and then Mel, please.
Hello. Yep, yeah, thank you, really lovely to meet you. Just interested to know how many people fit into the, the space.
Good question. So it's all been about the fire regulations at the moment. We are working on a capacity of 60, but we just passed our fire inspection with flying colours. So we're hoping to up that capacity shortly. It's all to do with whether we put another fire door into the side of the building so that instead of having two exits, we have three. But we've really, really worked hard within our amazing team at making sure that it's the safest, most welcoming space that we can possibly make it. So 60 at the moment, but we're looking to up that. We think 120 within a year.
Thank you.
Lisa, Mel.
Mainly for rehearsals before you go on tour or is it mainly for performance? Because 160 or 120 or whatever, that's quite a lot of people who are going to park nearby as well, I suspect.
Ah, good question. Yeah, it's really our base, so we're going to make work there, we teach there, we run a, a school called the School for Wise Children, which is for emerging artists, over 18 year olds. And every place is funded by us, we make sure that nobody has any barrier of money. We make sure that people have accommodation. We've got a fantastic network of hosts that help us host our teaching wing as well. Parking's a little bit of an issue, but we have got the little car park and in the evenings and garston vets. And we've done, and we've made sure that in all our communications with people, we make sure that they're not parking on Alexandra Road because that would make us very unpopular, which is the last thing we want to do.
Thanks, Mel. Fiona.
I think all the schools you mentioned are all young, primary sort of school levels. Do you have any plans of working with Froome College and sort of slightly older?
Well, it would be fantastic to work with older people. I'm actually studied on the national curriculum as a, an artist of importance. So it's, would be really good to get colleges to come and see the work.
Thanks, Fiona. Tracy.
It's just a, am I there? It's just a comment rather than a question. I wanted to, for people who don't know, just thank you for the incredible way you've been so open to all our discussions, both in my role as a councillor, but also my role as working for one of the local charities. That we've met several times, haven't we, along with councillor Polly Lamb as well, who unfortunately can't be here tonight? And you asked us, you know, which are the groups that you know of in the town who, you know, maybe don't get the opportunity to see work or be involved in work? And you've listened to every suggestion we made and you've fulfilled that. Because of your role as an MPO, which is the Arts Council status as a national portfolio organisation, I think it's both within your remit of requirement anyway, but also within the finance they give you to reach out to communities and be able to provide these things. So people that are coming along are not being asked to pay for this. And in the case of certainly the charity I work for, a support worker from our charity was paid to be there to ensure those families were welcomed in by someone that you've listened to everything. And you have Jess Frankham doing that. So you've picked probably the best person in the whole of Froome to do that and created a bit of employment there for her and employment for a stage manager who's also a local person. And you, right from the start, communicated very clearly with the local neighbours, because you're right, there isn't parking and things around there. And so you contacted people directly and said, if we're in your way, if our van's in the way, if we're too noisy, you know, we don't want to. You didn't say we don't want to be those hideous people that come in from big cities and launch ourselves around. But you made sure you listened to everything and I'm so grateful for that. It's been noted by a lot of people, thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you very much, Emma, Simon and Poppy. Again, welcome to Froome. On behalf of Froome Town Council, welcome.
Thank you.
And I'm sure that you are ready, but I'm sure you're going to be a great success.
Thank you. The last thing I wanted to say is we were sold out within days of going on sale. But if any of you wish to come and see a performance, we will do everything we can to make sure you can come and see us. So Poppy's very easy to find and we will fit you in because we're really proud of what we've achieved. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. I was about to say, you're more than welcome to stay, but if you have more pressing things, you understand. Thank you. We come to questions and comments from the public. Yep, Matt, I think.
Hi, yeah, yeah, Matt McCabe. You, I took an action to find out whether TruSpeed would run a free connection to the football club. I'm afraid the update is, is not positive in that TruSpeed are not now going to be fibering out to the area where the football club is. So the answer, I'm afraid, is no. Afraid there's a rationalisation going on in the, in the sector with all the small fibre providers. So prior to, I think, interest rates coming down and a sale of companies with somebody big buying them all out. So, so unfortunately, the funder has just said, no more new areas, focus on the areas you're in. So I'm sorry about that. I tried. The other question is, are they not coming to Froome full stop? I'm, I'm not sure that's the case, that they're, they're going to be in, they're not allowed to expand out of areas now that they're, they've already run fibre too. So they can connect people in the area they've, they've got to, but they can't run into neighbouring areas.
Expanding the network, it's simply keeping within.
Yeah, yeah. So, and so we then expect more, get as many customers on where you are and then there'll be a sale, much like happened with cable. All the small companies eventually got bought out and we're expecting that to happen in the, in the fibre digital era. So sorry about that.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Any, any other questions from public? No, I'll move to, you want to come back on that or councillors then? We'll move to councillors, Mel. Yep, please.
I mean, Rob presumably knows about this, there's, there's two strings of lights, Christmas lights out as I come to town tonight.
In the town? In the centre? Andy?
Yeah, just a little update. I had the pleasure last weekend of attending the AGM of the Somerset Association of Local Councils. And at that meeting, Anne Hills and myself were elected as directors of the company that runs that business. Just an update for colleagues and anybody else that's interested. And I will update my paperwork, Laura, I promise.
Thank you. I was going to say, thank you, Andy, your, your devotion and commitment are noted. Anne, my apologies. Other councillor, Froome Town councillor? Okay. Somerset councillor, I know we have received a report as we usually do from Dawn. Does anyone have any questions regarding that from Dawn Denton? With that? I'm now looking at, I know Damon given his apologies, I'm now looking at Martin. You, you just say anything?
We've got anything to say, but I'm here for questions. All I can say is I've got my expenses in this morning before the money runs out. And that's probably about the state of affairs. That's probably a fair reflection on the state of affairs.
Delivered by UBS or your expenses? Okay, any other points from councillors? He is online, yeah. Thank you very much. Hi, Adam. Okay, before we move to the next item, just going to insert a, a, a small item, a very pleasant item. Quite a few of you now probably already know that Monday evening, Froome Town Council won an award. The award relates to all the work that many people have put in to securing the football club. And Anita and I attended the first meeting of the CBS or the election of the CBS board last week. So that's not the end of the road, but it's a significant milestone. And to that end, I'd like Lisa, please, to come up and just say a few words.
Thank you, Philip. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody in this room, thank you to everybody in the town. And certainly thank you to Mel who started the whole thing off or picked it up from somebody and, and ran with it like some kind of international rugby player, which is the wrong sport to be quoting. But yes, just want to say thank you to all the officers who put in so much work and that it's a, a real important award for the whole town. Because it is a community asset that will deliver a lot more than just football. So Peter, if you want to show everybody what that amazing award looks like. Oh, apologies. The award was from the Football Supporters' Association to Froome Town Council for all of their work in saving the grounds at Badgers Hill. And part of what we had said in the acceptance comments was that we were really looking forward to making it more of a community asset beyond football, which is the, which is what had us, had got us the response from everybody in the room. And the audience talked about it as the way forward in terms of, of sport and communities and councils and sporting teams working together. So really, really important work and yeah, and we wish that Mel was there. And thank you, Mel, for everything that you did for it as well.
I'm just going to add one point to that, having spoken to Peter about it earlier today, that apparently on the evening, Peter was told that, I'm not, can't remember exactly by whom, but was actually told that the story of this whole project, they thought was the best of the whole evening of all of the awards for, for that evening.
Yeah, the, the person that said that was John Murray, who many of you will know is a celebrated BBC commentator in football. He came up to the whole team at the end of the event and said, he felt that this was one of the best stories that he'd, he'd heard through the night. And that was echoed by a number of, a number of people who, who came and saw us. So I think very much as far as we were concerned, that was the cherry on the cake really, to have that kind of recognition from somebody as, as important in the BBC.
Thank you, Peter. Mel?
I guess people don't realise, this is quite significant in the Football Supporters' Association. So it's the same meeting, people like Mo Salah got the Player of the Year award from Liverpool. So this is not just about very small clubs. And I think there were 10 awards overall, so that's really good. And I too was at the first CBS meeting last week, I think I spoke.
A corporal, Mel, yes. Okay, congratulations again to everybody involved. Lisa, I believe it's you now, an update on town centre programme. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a presentation with this, Rachel? And you'll be speaking to this as well?
Yeah, so we'll go first and then I'll have a little bit and then we'll hand back to you.
Excellent. So just to introduce, this is on an update for the town centre authored by quite a few people. Again, it seems to be Mel's night, started off by Mel. And lots of work put in from Nick as well, along with the others in the town centre group. So Peter, are you happy to speak to the progress report?
So the, the customary thing for us to do with these update reports is to actually give you a, a progress update and essentially a rag rating, so red, amber, green rating on all of the items that are within the Strategy and Work Programme. It's interesting actually that when you, when you look through all of those items, that there is still much work to do. We have made some progress, but there is still a lot of work to do. And I'll just, I'll, I'll give you a brief update on each of those. So the first one is define the actual town centre. And you'll see from the written report that we, that we have done that. Hopefully, most people would, would recognise that area as being the town centre. The second item is to find a way of securing crossing points between Bullcross and the George Hotel and also with Stony Street. And many of you will be aware that when we last updated you on this, we had at that point just completed the work on a local cycling and walking infrastructure plan. And the, that particular plan does identify those crossing points as being a priority measure. The, the difficulty we have at the moment is that there has been no design work done on, on those crossings. And we don't have any funding for implementation. However, the fact that that measure is identified in the LCWIP means that we, we stand a chance of securing Department for Transport funding in the future. Just one other point to add, and this was, this was covered in the written report, is that we feel that there are probably some complementary measures that are required in addition to introducing new crossing points within the, within the marketplace. And the report mentioned the idea of introducing a, a permanent SID, speed indicator device within the marketplace. Now, that is possible. So that's, that's something that's worthy of exploration. But one other measure that's come to our attention is something that is known as Auto Speed Watch, which is, is actually something that, that is probably probably of bigger impact because what it actually does is it records the registration number of those drivers that, that speed. I don't know whether Anita wants to say something about that at all, but those are definitely options open to us to try and reduce the speed of approaching traffic in the marketplace.
My understanding, Peter, thank you for that, is that Auto Speed Watch is fine in theory. There are a couple of challenges with it in that they can only be operated at the site where there is a community speed watch operative working. That's the first thing. The second thing is they actually are quite cumbersome pieces of equipment to carry around. So for elderly speed watch people, it might not be that easy a thing to set up. The other thing is that at the moment, we understand from the police that they haven't been fully recognised due to changes in government law. It means that they suspect it could be well after the election, before anything further is done to gain approval for those devices. So anyone that is currently operating them at the moment, they will be reviewing that data. But they will not be reviewing any new data from any new device until the new approval comes through. So one of the things we've talked about in the whole speed indicator device conversations that we have with Jane and Rob is that we suspect we might be better at the moment focusing on the indicator devices, trying to gain even more of those. We've just had the funding through for a second one. And hopefully, if we can sort out something for next year's budget, we ought to be applying for even more around the town. And it might be better if we then wait for another couple of years, which will allow us then to reapply for police funding for more devices. We could then look at the Auto Speed Watch items because by then they should have approval. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you very much for that, Anita, and, and that's a useful update really on, on that kind of measure. I suppose the, the point I was trying to, to make here, leaving aside the detail, is that what, what may be appropriate is, is for there to be a package of measures to try and make the marketplace in particular more pedestrian friendly and not just crossing points, but maybe other, other measures. And those were, were possibilities. And those were possibilities. Just move on to ensuring that more trees and plants and places to sit are in the town centre. And we know that Nick Dove and Sarah Butler have been doing some work with local residents, with local retailers to investigate the possibility of improvements. They've been looking in particular at Shepherd's Barton, but also the area close to the Valentine's Lamp. Various ideas have come forward. My understanding is that that still has a little way to go, but at least that those investigations are being made. The next item is identify key stakeholders in the town centre. And that was actually defined as property owners, both residential and non-residential tenants and business owners. We now have a database which includes business listings, but we also have mapped the owners of empty properties. Now, that enables us to have a conversation with the landlords of those properties to see if we can chart a way forward in terms of how those empty properties could be occupied in the future. There have been various meetings with business representatives in the community. So the next item, you know, which is about bringing those businesses together, that's something which we've done quite a bit of. And there's more to do. And my understanding from Rachel is that there are plans to engage groups of creative businesses in the new year. The next item is probably a little more controversial. I know there have been some real concerns about the cleanliness of the town centre. I'm pleased to say, and hopefully most of you are aware, that our Town Centre Ranger is now doing a sterling job. That their focus in the first few weeks of their operation has been on removing graffiti, removing weeds, removing fly posters from street furniture, particularly at the entrance to Cheep Street, and also removing graffiti from some of the road signs. And a little bit later, I know Rachel's going to show you some before and after pictures, just so that you can see the impacts that Mike is having on this. Unfortunately, there are some issues, though, not just in the town centre, but also townwide in terms of cleaning the streets and emptying bins and things. And these are due to ID Verdi's recent difficulties in recruiting staff. To the extent that when there was an incident in the last few days in the town centre where vandalism occurred, our Town Centre Ranger had to be drafted in to support ID Verdi in actually cleaning up. Obviously, that's something we're keeping a close eye on. But you need to know, really, that this is an area of work that needs further attention. The next one is about vehicle carming using, or traffic carming using planters and other street furniture. As you may be aware, we're going to be trialling this approach in our school streets scheme, which we hope will be starting very soon. But at the moment, there are no detailed plans for the town centre. There's a potential, of course, for us to learn from the school streets experience once it gets going. But this is an area that we've marked red on the RAG rating because there is some further work to be done in terms of bringing that kind of project forward. The next one we were actually showing as green. So we've been doing a lot of work to support events in the town centre. I'm sure that many of you are familiar with those events that we have been involved with or supported. There are also some plans for next year. So a cycle festival is being planned for 2024. Also, The View From Here is another event. And there are also been conversations started with Photo Frome, with Frome Festival and Purple Elephant around events for next year. So there's quite a lot of activity going on on this one. And I know that a little bit later, Rachel and Lisa are going to be picking up on the significance of events as a way of generating footfall in the town centre. The next one is around car parks and how we could have greater influence over how those are managed in the future. Conversations with Somerset Council have been initiated, but I can't give you any kind of firm information on that one, except that those conversations will continue. One of the things that was picked up in the report very firmly is that we do have some capacity issues when it comes to taking forward initiatives within the town centre. And this is something that, as the recommendations you will see, suggests that we need to work on in the context of a strategy for the town centre and to bring forward some recommendations about how we can improve that capacity and start to make bigger progress in terms of delivering on some of these objectives. Promotion is a very important part of our work, led by Rachel's team in marketing and communications. Discover Frome is a really important platform. And there are a number of aspects to discover Frome. I won't go into detail because, again, Rachel and Lisa are going to be talking a bit more about that and the opportunities for us to develop Discover Frome further. Some quite exciting ideas are being explored there. It's fair to say, though, that Discover Frome does need an overhaul. It's been around for a little while. This is the website. It's been around for a little while and it does need further development. We also want to develop some partnerships outside of the town, take advantage of the fact that so many of our visitors these days come from Bath and from places outside of Frome. And there's an opportunity there for us to promote Frome to those that visit those places. And the last item, again, in the green zone, as far as the RAG rating is concerned, is our work to preserve, restore and maintain various open spaces within the town centre. So included in that is our ongoing management of Bullcross, supporting the use of markets on that space. Obviously, there's a Christmas tree and lights, which we have improved this year. Appreciate we need to address those lights that are out, but that will happen, hopefully, very soon. Managing bus shelters. We're working closely with the Civic Society and the Frome Society on a project to restore the cocky lamps in the town centre. We're working with the Environment Agency on Riverbank Management and obviously continuing to look after Chateau Gontier and its presentation. There's quite a lot there to take in. But I suppose that the main takeaway, as I mentioned earlier, is that some progress has been made, but there's still a lot of work to do. And I think that that was one of the firm conclusions within the report that hopefully you've all read. It might be useful at that point if we take any questions about the RAG rating and then I can pass over to Rachel.
Any questions, comments? Andy? Hi, Adam. Can we patch him in?
Good evening, Frome. Can you hear me?
Hi, Adam. Yes, we can.
Hi, hi. Thank you. Yeah, I had a couple of questions for Peter. Thank you for that. About the crossings, it is a real problem getting across at the best of times between Stony Street and the marketplace. But was there any money left over from the work previously done? Because that was part of the scheme. And if so, what happened to that before the Somerset Highways officer said, no, you can't improve the crossings there? And also, what's the plan now? Clearly, it needs Somerset Highways approval to do anything in the road. Has anyone gone back to the officer or the team that said no to engage with them and come up with another plan? And how can Somerset councillors help the town council do that?
Thanks, Adam.
On Adam's first question, Adam, thank you for those questions. On your first question, unfortunately, there wasn't any budget left out of the marketplace regeneration. The money that we were going to attach to those crossings was repurposed. So unfortunately, we can't draw on that. We are going to be very heavily dependent on external funding to be able to deliver those crossing points. And I think it's fair to say we're going to be heavily dependent on the commitment of Somerset Council as a highway authority to be able to deliver those. We have not had any recent conversations with the highway engineers. Our principal focus has been on getting school streets across the line, but very happy to pick that up again. Because I think the interesting thing about this is that if you're familiar with school streets, there are actually some uncontrolled crossings which are part of that scheme. You may recall that we were advised just before we we started on the marketplace regeneration that the DFT policy negated against actually delivering those uncontrolled crossings. But they are being delivered as part of school streets. And I think it's a very interesting conversation for us to have now on the back of that, to see whether it is possible for us to rejuvenate that idea. But unfortunately, Adam, we are going to be very heavily dependent on external funding and the support of Somerset Council to enable that to happen. We would welcome support from the Somerset councillors representing Frome. So we will, you know, we will have a conversation with you to explore how best it might be to raise this again. We're not under any illusions, though, that this is going to be difficult in the current financial emergency. We're talking about a new project here at a time when Somerset Council is having to make very severe cuts.
But yes, that's understood. I'm just thinking, well, what external funding can someone find? With the relevant offices in Somerset Council can be quite good at that sometimes and others. Can I just ask what the funds for those crossings were repurposed towards? And was that within the town council?
I'll be honest with you, Adam. I can't remember the detail, but I do know that we didn't end up with any surplus on that project. I can find out for you. But essentially, there were contingencies that arose. And those were well reported at the time. And it was necessary for us to repurpose budget for those purposes. But I can certainly try and obtain the detail for you.
Peter, I recall it was something to do with drainage. I think it was drainage that we uncovered that needed a whole lot of redoing.
Yeah, well, thanks for that reminder, Anne. I mean, the reality, Adam, is that, and this is a problem that besets a lot of highway schemes. You can do all the surveys that are necessary before work starts, but until you actually break ground, sometimes you don't know, for example, if there is a need to divert services or to put new drainage in or whatever. Because very often, the surveys don't show the location in terms of the depth of those services below the surface of the highway. And certainly, we did face some challenges there that required a repurposing of our budget. There may well be other issues, but Anne, thank you for reminding me on that one.
Thank you, Adam.
Okay, thank you. One more question about another matter.
Very quickly, Adam, please.
Yes, the events in town. Other places have love, you know, love Yeovil, love Taunton. We maybe have a love Frome campaign perhaps. Also, other places like, you know, Bath have a very successful business improvement district which raises money from the town centre businesses that benefit from a better town centre. Is it time to think about that again? Thanks.
Do you want to take that?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Thank you, Adam. Yes, we have been looking at the USP of Frome and ways of marketing it external to Frome, so to get more people in. Also looking at some of those relationships where we can pull other visitors who are visiting the area in. With regards to a bid, we did explore that with Bath Bid. And what we can charge the businesses won't produce the kind of money that would make a bid viable here. But we are looking at ways to replicate a similar system or a similar service that relies less on money from the businesses.
Thank you for that. I'm going to bring in Peter.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm going to bring in Andy Jones, who's been waiting very patiently.
Excuse me, yeah, just very quickly. You talked about the work that our Town Centre Ranger had done on cleaning up some bus shelters. My understanding is that also some of our local residents have stepped in and done some great work looking after their own immediate neighbourhoods, cleaning up bus shelters. There's a group of parents from Trinity School recently spent the weekend tidying up the footpath outside there. And I really think, you know, that's very much the Frome way of doing things is that we try to enable people to look after their own areas as best they can as money becomes short to do it from a Somerset Council level.
Thanks, Andy. I've got one more from Martin.
Yeah, one or two points, if I may. First of all, to say that despite my earlier cynical reference, I actually am really pleased to be here and see progressing with constructive things, constructive measures to improve the town and its environment. It's so refreshing to be in a meeting where that can happen and is being made to happen, rather than being told that it can't happen. And as you can appreciate, we're facing a lot of negativity at the moment. Comment about traffic management. It's one of the things that I think we as councillors get complaints about all the time. And inevitably, there are long-term problems with long-term solutions and those solutions tend to get kicked down the road. I'm really pleased that Frome Town Council is taking some initiative on traffic management. Obviously, the limit to which you can do it is directed by finance and that's another issue and not one we can discuss now. Another thing I was interested in is trees and planting of trees. I felt very frustrated about the way tree management, urban tree management is conducted through Somerset. Again, I think part of it is to do with the distance and not having a number of tree managers to actually deal with things. But actually, I think local councils know more about their own urban environment and about the trees. And I'm thinking that in the long term, I'm just throwing this out there, Frome Town Council, I want to think about taking responsibility more for the trees. We get far too many occasions when trees are simply just chopped down because they're inconvenient rather than dealt with. And this is all to do with budgets and it's all to do with management. And if it was handled, managed more locally, I think we'd save a lot more trees and plant a lot more. Can I ask a question, personal question, dealing with car parks? Are you speaking with Steve Deakin?
We have had conversations with Steve Deakin, but there will be others who will be involved, yeah.
This is, sorry, forgive the question. I haven't had a reply from Steve for about six months. I just wonder if he still exists. So you've had some conversation with him. That's great, thank you very much. True question.
An answer to a question this afternoon, so he does.
Oh, he's still alive, right, that's good. And yeah, thank you, it's just me. And yeah, there's some new signposts, fingerposts have gone up, which is not mentioned in that, which is brilliant. Are they the ones that were funded about 10 years ago?
You'll have to wait until you see my presentation in a minute.
Oh, okay, lovely, okay, thank you. Well, I'm very pleased. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, Martin. Over to you and Lisa, I think, next.
Thank you, Peter. I'm just going to take the opportunity to pass over to Rachel.
Thank you. Is this working? Yes, no, good, great. Okay, so that was quite a lot of. So that was quite a lot of positive greens, you would have noticed, on the RAG rating. But that is not to say the job is anywhere close to being remotely done. You will notice that there certainly has felt that there's been a lot of movement. It certainly felt in town that there's been a lot more shops closing recently. We have done a quick count-up. And we've got a lot of other shops going, but luckily, quite a few coming as well. So we were at the same stage as we were in June with exactly the same occupancy. So we've still got 17 empty properties, but quite a few people, quite a few properties such as Penley. There's something that they know what's going into it. It's going to be, yeah, yeah, fantastic, yeah. Oh, yes, and the Y Gallery, there's good news there that although it is closing, we're not expecting it to be closed for very long because it's going to reopen as another gallery, we understand. So that is, that's good, but it just means, you know, it's holding their own. Sorry? We don't know anything about Hoipaloi yet, no. If you can move the slide on. But what I do have to report, which is quite worrying, is from the footfall figures. November, despite all of our big events that we've delivered in November, you will see that footfall is 16% down this November compared to November last year. So that is quite a stark figure, and that's roughly 500 people a day. We can make assumptions about why that is. In the report, it talks about some of those things. We can only speculate. There's obviously more work to do to find out what's going on there. Just to note, though, it's not all doom and gloom because October's data was a 10% increase. And there's nothing to really highlight why that was. And we can't really tell because we have nothing to base it on, other than last year's. And this year's, we can't tell whether last year's was a particularly poor October, although I think, given the economic climate in September last year, we can think that that is probably what it was. The dwell time, however, remains so this whole year, the dwell time has been higher than last year's. So that means that generally speaking, people are spending about half an hour more in the town centre than they were. Possibly, possibly. So that are those figures. I'm also just going to give you a little bit of a spiel about what Discover Froome is in terms of its package of measures. Because obviously, when we talk about Discover Froome, quite often it is assumed that I'm just talking about the website, but I'm quite often not. Quite often, I'm talking about the whole package. So what is Discover Froome? Well, it's a website and the subsequent social media that sits alongside it to promote broadly businesses. It's a package of measures that improve the image of the town. And its attempt is to make it attractive for residents, visitors and investors. And it hopes to identify events, businesses and walking and cycling as our visitor attraction and ultimately to improve the footfall in the town. Discover Froome website, as I said, it is popular, actually. 250,000 meaningful views last year. So most of those were on the What's On pages and our featured posts, such as, what have we just done, Christmas posts, Christmas roundups, Christmas fairs, What's On. They're the really popular posts. But as identified by the town centre groups and businesses, it actually really does need a overhaul. It's not really fit for purpose now anymore. It looks cranky. It is still top of the Google ratings. So you Google Froome, that's what you get. But obviously, you need to know that you want to come to Froome before you Google it and find out what's going on. So that's what we mean when we're talking about pushing and pulling. So that sort of is the push-out message, and that's working really, really well. But what is pulling people to Froome? So as part of this package, we also have the information point. So we've got 16 volunteer staff who support it. We've moved it recently from the Black Swan, where in fact they were very happy, to the library, where they were very happy until yesterday when the heating broke. So, yeah. So they certainly have greater visibility in the library, particularly now in light of Jane's subsequent report, so that's great. They support visitors, the local knowledge, and they signpost to events particularly. But they also keep residents up to date with information and are really the endless source for bus timetables. That's where the most thing that we give out, other than maps. The guided walks also lead from there to the annual. So as yet, we are in the process of reviewing all of this work. We'll hear a little bit more about, we've sort of stopped that. Something else has come over the top of that for now, and you'll hear a little bit more about that from Lisa. But the annual, it's a partnership project with the list. We're not yet entirely decided where we are sitting with that this year. But because we need to do subsequent work, the collaboration means that basically businesses get listed for free. 5,000 copies then go out to other TICs. And 5,000 copies are delivered locally. And then we have 2,000 for the Discover Froome information point to give away to visitors. It's got some nice maps and guides in there and talks about our annual events, too. Notice boards and their ambassadors, you will have seen them around the town, all the notice boards. They're all generally nicely lined up with things that are newly up to date. So that is a volunteer service again that we coordinate. It works really swiftly, and we don't have to do too much about that other than a little bit of paper admin. And then there's this little sentence. The work that goes on to support the events across town, engaging with partners such as the Kindness Festival or a package of support which includes signposting to funding, advice and promotion. Indeed, we were able to support wise children. So that was very good. And then, of course, there are the events that we deliver. So if we can have next. So there is no doubt that high streets are changing and that Discover Froome needs to change with it. There are huge challenges which the paper talks about. And of course, we can only speculate why. So basically, we will have to work harder to get people here and focus our very limited resources. It's no longer enough to push out an image and expect the people to just be drawn in. We need to have reasons for people to come here, and we need to develop a cohesive strategy to support that. So moving forward, plans include segmenting audience sectors and creating bespoke offers, inviting the creative community to be part of that conversation, as Peter alluded to earlier, and developing partnerships with local visitor destinations, including other attractions such as long leets and centre parks. Ultimately, this whole area is about civic pride and footfall. This is one way that we can look to this. And if you think about this side of the circle, the accessibility, parking, pedestrianisation, diverse retail mix, Peter was talking to, and the visual appeal, Peter was talking to earlier. And then there's the community engagement, the events, the tourism development, promotion and marketing, and that sort of forms another side. And then there's the collaborations that are really important, the partnerships with both the creatives and the support for local businesses. So that may be a useful tool for sort of looking at developing a strategy. All these areas of work could have the potential to generate both that footfall and the trade. So what we really need now is to develop that key piece around the town centre strategy and to really have something that will be both an engagement tool as well as a marketing tool and that will pull people into Froome. So I think that leads over to explore, really.
Thank you, Rachel.
Oh, did anybody have anything? Sorry.
Anita.
Yeah, just interested in your figures on footfall and dwell time. Rachel, how do we arrive at those sorts of figures?
So last June, Mendip installed an intelligence system which live in two places in the town. And basically, they're cameras and they count. And I think they are using various data, including phone data. And then they use an algorithm and create the figures. It's very witchy. And then we log in and we can check what's going on. So we only have access to Froome's, but also that all of the Mendip towns are in the system. The dwell time is a number that is given on the back of the thing. And I think it's based on mobile phone data, so they can tell how long a mobile phone has been near the.
Okay.
Near the.
Right, thank you.
Cameras, equipments.
Okay.
Thanks, Anita. I've got.
Follow, is that the monitor that was installed on the balcony at the Froome Festival office? That's one of them, is it?
Yes, that's one of them, and then there's another one in the.
Didn't know if that was working. All right, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. To Lisa, I think.
Thank you, Rachel. I know that Mel's been going on about it for a long time, as have Nick and Mark. We've heard about it from a number of other councillors over quite some time. But the town centre really is the beating heart of Froome. You can go to a number of towns in the area, and there's nothing. There's nothing in the town centre, there's no activity, there's no life, there's no energy. We're really lucky here in Froome because we do have a vivacious and active and thriving town centre. I know that a lot of us have been concerned about the shops closing. We can see that there actually isn't much change in terms of the vacancies or occupancy rates, although there is quite a bit of dynamism in those companies turning over. Now, that's no bad thing for independent shops. Change is not necessarily a bad thing. What is a bad thing is the state of those shops when you look at them on the outside. So we do need to do something about that and see what we can do to fill it. You can see some of the challenges that Rachel has pointed out. We were asked by councillors to go away and do a little bit more deep diving into Discover Froome, looking at what Discover Froome actually is. Rachel and I spent a little bit of time looking at what some of the challenges for Discover Froome are. One of the key things that we saw, and Rachel alluded to it, is that we do a lot of push. We push out a lot. We talk to the people who've already chosen Froome as this destination. We speak to people who are already here. We speak to people who are residents. What we don't do quite as well is speak to people beyond Froome, people who've not yet decided to choose Froome as a destination. So that's one of the things that we'd really like to look at. If you look at events, those are hugely important to a town centre, not just for civic pride and sense of community, but because they bring people into the town. And when they bring people into the town, people spend money in the town. And despite people shopping on the internet, being in a town and being able to MegPy things does lead to more spend. If you look at statistics for the impact of the Bath Christmas market, over the time that the market is on, it brings over £30 million worth of revenue into Bath. So that does point to events and footfall being valuable to a town centre, having a dynamic programme of events over the year, which we do have, but finding ways to be able to market that a little bit better and push that beyond the people that we already speak to. In Mel's paper, he alludes to dynamic leadership and being innovative. We're not going to create change by doing the same things again and again. That's not how towns thrive. We've done lots of things. We need to do something different. We need to be brave. If you look at the High Street Trust, they recommend partnerships. And we've just seen an example of what a partnership between a council and a sporting club can do. We need to think about that the same way. We need to think about what we can do to work with the businesses, businesses who provide support for town centres and councils can do together, along with the residents, to make sure that the town centre is thriving, to make sure that the businesses are thriving. One of those conversations that we've had recently has been with a company called Explore. Now, I haven't put any information on there because we are only at the starting point of a conversation. What we have spoken to Explore about is some of the challenges that we've identified, challenges that could potentially be met by a business who works in that space, some innovative solutions. What we've looked at with Explore is whether a partnership might be worth exploring further, pardon the pun, but thinking about the ways in which they could support us as a council to bring more footfall, to support the independent businesses, to provide us with updates, much-needed updates to our website, to work with the businesses to further promote them, not just within the town, but beyond the town as well, to form partnerships with other independent shops in different towns and cities. We're at the very start of that conversation. But some of the things that we are exploring with them is how we could use a platform such as theirs to come up with more innovative ideas, to share those challenges and for them to use what they do best to support. So as I said, some of the things that we've discussed is whether they would be able to provide us with a website which would remain in our URL, and we would maintain all the SEO. Rachel talked about the number of hits and the success of Discover Froome in terms of promotion. They're looking to hire somebody on the ground who liaises directly with the businesses and supports them in events and also promotions. There's geolocation, so we can be even more refined in looking at where people shop, what people do. There could be push notifications within there. So we're looking at a digital solution in terms of an app perhaps, a website, somebody on the ground, and an opportunity for all of our independent businesses to be better supported. We've not yet looked at other opportunities, so this is the first that we've come across. They are very keen to work with us, and they also have the interest of Ian Harvey, who is CEO of Place Management nationally, who is keen to look at this as a case study. This isn't free, and I don't think it ought to be. I think that if we want value delivered, we have to pay for it. Asking for something for free means that you either get it late, or it's not done well enough, or you're the last person on their list. So what we want to talk about here is whether this is an area that you want us to look further into. Is this something that you are keen to lean into? Or do we look at more in-house ways of solving some of the challenges that have been identified? So over to you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, if there are no many, was, yep, sorry, Fiona, go on. On the presentation.
Let loose.
A few points about different things in that case.
The first one, I'm probably not going to make myself any friends in saying this and it's a bit persnickety, but the last time, and I think this isn't just to do with the town centre programme, by the way, I think this is an overall issue. The last time the town centre, there was an update on the town centre programme was back in July and we voted on a series of resolutions and two of those were to set up an advisory group for Discover Froome, which you alluded to, and an advisory group for a partnership meeting. I think we've also voted back in May for advisory groups to be created for all of our work programmes, which as far as I'm aware, has not happened. I actually didn't vote for the advisory groups, I was going to put that out there. But they were sort of set up as a, they were filling a specific need around accountability and decision-making. But I think that we've got a bit of a gap around now, to be honest, and I'm feeling a little bit uncomfortable about it. And I think there have been a few decisions that have been made by us as a council that haven't quite been followed through. And I'm not saying they should do and there's probably very good reasons why they haven't. But I would quite like us to have a look back at previous decisions and maybe do a bit of a decision log and see where we're at on things and have another look at the advisory groups. Because if they're not working, they're not working and we need to, but we need something because it is all feeling a little bit, at the moment, in terms of how decisions are being made and especially if we're going to take on more responsibility through Somerset. I think there's also some quite interesting, I'm just going to drop this in there, I've been looking at sociocracy recently and thinking what a sociocratic town council could look like, which is quite exciting and I think there's something there. But yeah, I think I'm just going to sort of highlight that as I think we need to kind of trace back previous decisions and make sure that we are holding ourselves accountable to those decisions and logging them and coming back on them. Because there was also, I just double-checked, there was another decision about spending money, like have we got an update on that? Yeah.
Can I?
It's the first of, one of a couple of points, but yeah, come on.
Do you want to come back on that or do you want to?
I'm just concerned that we're straying off a little bit here. But if you wanted very quickly.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to. So we have not yet set up the advisory group for Discover Froome. The work that Rachel and I have done on it is looking under the bonnet. So, so what actually is it? What can we see as the potential gaps? We know that it needs an overhaul, we know that it needs a lot of work. It's going to take a lot more people to, to understand that better. But starting, starting the bit on, on what bit it's not doing well at the minute is where we got to. We, we didn't seek out a conversation with Explore. It, it was one of those opportunities that, that we looked a little bit further into. There is, there are no decisions that have been made at all. The conversations have explored what the limits of that potential partnership could be, which is, which is what we're presenting now. And if it's not something, a direction of travel that all councillors are interested in us pursuing and, and looking in different ways, then that's your decision. We don't think that we should be spending any more time, effort or energy going any further with those discussions. And it's not the only option. So I absolutely hear what you're saying, that the, there does need to be.
Making a broader point as well, and I don't want it to feel like it's coming directly at the town centre work programme because I think this is a broader issue, but it's just come up because of this.
And I think it's important to raise.
I think, can I, on in terms of recommendation, I completely agree. I think Mel's paper, thank you very much, it was really interesting, really, really good. And I think your recommendation for a workable strategy is bang on and also that it does need more resource behind it in terms of the staff. I think that we can't, as you say, it can't be run on councillors' energy, however much it, however good it is. I do feel slightly unsure about what the overall aim of this work programme is as well. And I wonder whether, again, I think, and I've raised this before, slightly clunky because it is pulling in sort of economic development, I think.
Yeah.
It's titled technically economic development. And actually, Froome, Froome's businesses are not just in the town centre, they are outside of the town centre as well. So is what we're actually looking at economic, I don't, I mean, I, I then get into, I don't want to talk about economic growth because, don't economics, degrowth, et cetera. But is it economic sustainability that actually is what we're looking at, how to create a thriving local economy? And I would love to see a really good, well researched strategy on that personally, that looks at that in all the different.
Can I come back on that one now? So I, I just found my notes, there's a whole bunch of paper up here, so, so sorry. The three things that, that, that we thought might be valuable to, to kind of map out, and this is specifically for the town centre. And I completely acknowledge that the town centre is just, I suppose, in that newly mapped space and that there are many businesses that don't sit within that. And when we talk about town centre, we're not just talking about retail, we're talking about the, the kind of heart of a town, which is, which is much, much more than retail, much more than, than, than food. It's about the events, it's about kind of what brings people into it and where people congregate. For the purposes of the town centre, what we have been looking at is a strategy that would increase footfall, increase visibility within and beyond Froome and increase spend in the businesses within Froome, which would include those beyond just the town centre. We have a population of 27,000, we have a large number of businesses. It, it could be argued that many of those businesses within the town centre sell things that people like and want, not necessarily things that people need. So although I'm sure that I do need quite a few of those nice smelling candles. But, you know, we do have to think of a broader strategy than just bringing people in to spend on, on the essentials because it's not a town that has a lot of shops that have essentials in it. So yes, I hear you, what you're saying about, about wider economic development and exploring that further, not forgetting that there are businesses that, that aren't within the town centre. Having a viable town that, that, that people spend time in, that's community building. Whether they spend or not is, is another thing, but, but the chances of people spending when more people are in there is, is much higher.
The final thing on the.
I'll give you just one more.
Yep, that's the last point, it's on cons, I need more information on the Explore, Discover Froome. I think we need, if this is going to be a sizable amount of money, I'm not, I know you're not asking us to make the decision, but I need a point on this, I need figures, I need, I want to look at different options, what the pros and cons are, and I just want a lot more information.
And I'm hoping that you'll help us do that.
Happy to.
Can I bring in, others now, we've got these four people waiting. Ben, then Andy.
Yeah, I'm just intrigued as to whether Explore and I suppose us as a council have any other metrics of success other than just increased spend. I understand that that's like ultimately the bottom line in terms of like town centre development, but you know, we can increase spend by increasing data tracking and having more of those types of technologies, but that doesn't necessarily lead to a more enjoyable town centre space that increases wellbeing and blah, blah, blah. So I'm just intrigued as to whether either us as an organisation or Explore, do they have any definable metrics as to how they would define success apart from increased spend?
So to, to, to kind of hit your, your, your bigger point, if there was a company that could deliver on all of the challenges that we face and something that could act as a magic bullet, I think it'd be well worth spending a sizable chunk of money. There, the conversations that we're having is with, with Explore and anyone else who comes to the table is not about solving all of those challenges, it's about being a part of it and working in partnership. What they are looking at is, is spend, visits, number of people engaged in the app, the website, if we do decide to, to explore, explore further. The, the website would be ours and they would just be providing the resource. So at the minute, we have, we've earmarked about 20,000 pounds for a website build. We're looking at whether as part of a relationship, a time limited relationship, whether we could get them to deliver things that we already know that we have to do and get additional value in it. This will be the first time that they will have worked closely with a town council. They are working with Bath Bid at the minute, so this is very new for them. They're not, they're not selling us anything, this is an opportunity to co-create something. So yes, there are measures beyond. We need to identify those and, and we need to have a discussion. Some of the other opportunities are financial kickback to the town centre. They, they want to be charitable in their partnerships. It could potentially mean that there's a grant funding pot that helps us to fill some of the gaps or provide opportunities for entrepreneurial residents to start a business, perhaps delivering within the town using e-bikes and we could perhaps seed that as a, as, from that fund. So there's some really exciting opportunities. There's, there's no sales aspect to it. It's very much an opportunity for, for co-creation and partnership working, which does need a lot more due diligence, a lot more, a lot more thinking about. But there's no sense doing any more of that work if, if the rest of the councillors aren't leaning into it. So there's absolutely no decision. It's, you know, is, is this something you are interested in us pursuing further is the limit of, of where we're going with this.
Thanks, Lisa. I've got Andy, Carla and then Tracy and Mel.
I'll try and be very brief. The, the report certainly highlights the, or recognises that for Froome to thrive, we need to bring in people from outside of Froome as well. And I, I know for some of our residents, that's a controversial assertion, they would far rather that Froome was a little microcosm unto itself and we didn't get all these visitors blocking our streets. But the truth is, if we want a thriving township, we need to pull people from outside of the Froome town boundaries to help spend their money here. There are actually two events that you mentioned which have a very positive pull impact and I'm very pleased as a trustee of Froome Festival to see Froome Festival called out as one of those because I think it is one of the, the key things that makes Froome what it is. The other one is the Froome Independent, the Sunday market that happens once a month. My understanding is that that organisation is also keen to grow and potentially change its basis to become a CIC. And I think we as a council should be looking how we can best help support them in that road.
Yeah, thank you, Andy. We have, I know Rachel's had lots of discussions with the Froome Independent. I've spoken with Victoria a number of times and she's quite keen to be part of the solution for pop-ups if we can get some, some, some kind of relationship going with Somerset County Council that, that makes it easier for people to do pop-ups and less expensive. That's certainly something that she's keen to, to be involved in as well. Thank you, Andy.
Carla.
Thank you. I just want to check the, so the recommendations, it's basically to, the people named on the recommendations to go away and create a workable strategy to support this area. And then within the paper, you've kind of alluded to potential strategies. So one, you've spoken about potentially creating a role, which was in the previous paper, I think in July, in the end, we didn't, I think that part was actually then removed because it was a little bit unclear. So is that, when you talk about going away and talking about workable strategy, so I'm hearing kind of different options, one potentially being a role, one working with an external organisation and you've mentioned one Explore. Is this also what you refer to with, with the, the CIC? The town council's role should spin off a dedicated CIC to be the organiser. I'm just kind of working out what's the, I'm saying it's not radical, but I'm trying to work out what's the radical thinking that you're suggesting? And that's why I'm kind of unclear what recommendation, what we're voting on really is.
So.
Obviously to go away and think further.
Yeah.
Paper, obviously there already has been some thinking and I'm trying to work out what, what the options are really.
So since the last time there was anything on, on, on the town centre, there's been a lot of, as I referred to with Fiona, looking under the bonnet, what, what actually is going on in Discover Froome? What, what, if there is, if there are things missing in it, what, what are those things? Where are the babies in the bath water? Because there was a call from some of the businesses, you know, that it needs to be completely revamped, that it needs to be completely redone, it was rubbish. That's not true. And there are so many amazing things within Discover Froome that could be better promoted. And I think the, the more innovative part of it is looking at how we do that differently. So do we just do that in-house? Do we continue to do that in-house? How do we, how do we bring in more innovative partners? How do we develop more innovative thinking? So do we look at some of the entrepreneurial hubs that are around Bristol and Bath and, and suck in some of that talent and some of that thinking? How do we get, how do we get sparkiness going here? And there are plenty of sparky people, but, but where's, where's the hub of that? Where's that, where's that thinking? And, and, and where does that sit? Because I've been looking for it for a long time in, in, in Froome, I tend to find it elsewhere, London, Bristol, Bath. So yeah, I, I can't tell you what it is exactly that we're going to put in there, but opportunities to, to think out of the box, to be out of the box. We, we, we have as a council done that really, really well. And what we're doing at the minute isn't, isn't going to make amazing things happen. So.
Thank you.
Need to explore.
Can I bring in, just very quickly, I've got two people waiting.
So the, so for example, we helped to create Fair Froome, recognising that there was a need and there was not a community organisation in Froome filling that space. When I read that section on, you know, a dedicated CIC, that's actually what I was kind of thinking, that it wasn't that we would necessarily partner with someone that, well, it may or may not fit, and I guess that's the research, but actually we also have the potential to support the creation of a new one that would.
Absolutely. Yes, I, I think there's a, a balance to be struck between using and accessing talent and innovation and also growing our own. Grow your own innovation is, is, is hard. It's, you know, it takes time. But I'm also a big advocate for spinning out and spinning up, as Ben loves to hear me say. Or, you know, or we could spin up and spin out. So I think that we need to be open to, to, to lots of different possibilities and just make sure that we do our due diligence and, and make sure that we're making an informed, considered choice that may involve a bit of risk because it's what we do.
My head's spinning now at the moment. Just two more, can I go with Tracy please and then Mel? Thank you.
Interested to know why Explore, where that's come from? Was, you know, was that, I'm suppose their, their pedigree and their experience, because if this is something that is new to us, are we not looking perhaps for a partner that has already achieved something like this? What about other organisations? Has it been asked of that already? Did they approach us, do we approach them? And I was quite interested because I heard a little bit about it, obviously, and we've had our papers and it's been mentioned before. And I've not really, I've, I've, I thought, well, I'll start with the app, which seems to be, you know, we're not had really, having uninstalled it and reinstalled it a couple of times, both on my phone, which is a Samsung and on my partner's phone. My feeling is like we want, that, that they're not ready somehow based on that app.
And I couldn't agree more. So as I said, when I was speaking to, to Carla, this is not, they're not selling us anything. They are creating something new, using the technology that they have. That's what they want to do with us, they want to look at how they can work with town councils to provide an opportunity and work with businesses.
Just really, do we, you know, because it raises the question, you know, do we, do we need to reach out and think and ask who else is out there that is an organisation that may be able to offer and guide more because it's new to us? I don't know, I just feel.
I think if we.
It feels like it's a kind of a done deal, we're in a public meeting, repeating their name, you know, and they're in our paperwork. It feels like if I was running an organisation like theirs, I think, why didn't I get a chance to have a look?
I think perhaps the difference is that we're looking at co-creation rather than them providing us with a solution that already exists. So if it was a wholesale, let's get on board with Explore and it, it's not enough. It's, I don't, I don't think in what it presents and the opportunities it has at the minute is enough. What I think the interesting bit is, is a potential partnership and asking them to use what it is that they do and what they know to co-create something with us that offers a solution for our residents, for us as a council and for our businesses. And yes, we should be speaking to other people. We didn't go out looking for anything. We didn't go out looking for anything. We met them and then asked about what the opportunities were, and perhaps where we could go with that.
Okay, so that's something to look into, depending on what happens tonight. Mel, please.
Okay. Just a few words, as the author of 95% of this report, its shortcomings are actually being pointed out by lots of people. And actually, that goes to prove one of the strongest issues which is raised there, is that we don't have enough support within the town council to make this happen properly. So if a councillor's got to go away and write a 10-page report, which was finished quite a while ago, I've got to say, then I think it's a reflection of where we are. And so really, for me, the point of this report was to say, do you want to take this seriously or not? And if you do, where's the line in the budget and in next year's budget to make that happen? And do you want to take some risks with explore, which seems to have dominated the back end of this discussion, but it's just recently emerged and it's about co-creation. So nobody could have understood where it was going at this stage. The report clearly says, we'll bring it back to you and you can decide. You'll miss the budget. So you lose another 12 months. You will not be able to, we will not be able to cope with the tsunami of change which is coming down into all town centres. And actually, it's not just about footfall. I'm on Ben's side, really. Town centres are much more important than shopping, thank God. It actually is really crucial for people to feel that they're part of a community. That's where a lot of people see it. They have long histories in those, in those buildings and in those services which come from there. And most of them are going to disappear in one form or another, very quickly. So if we miss this year's budget, you've lost another 12 months. So that's what was influencing me in terms of writing it. Okay, it wasn't brilliant. The advisory group or potential advisory group, there was quite a few meetings, but they actually ran into the sand because there was nobody to support, there was nobody to support those people who were actually prepared to put in their time. So, so I'm basically saying to you, you know, show a bit of, show a bit of faith, show a bit of optimism, and let's move this on. It'll come back to you. You'll get the final decisions in terms of what you want. But without that, we're going to sit around for another 14 months doing a go-all, it seems to me. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mel. It really has to be very, very quick, not opening up to more discussion, Carla, sorry.
I'm so quick. I'm just wondering why then in the recommendation, considering exactly what you've just said, Mel, and I was expecting to see it, why there's not a recommendation to already continue with that previous recommendation to create a role that can support? Because if I see who's picking up that work, it's four councillors and two members of staff that have already got a lot of their plate. So why isn't that already in the recommendations?
Quickly, Mel, yeah.
It's quite complex. It was there and now it's not there.
So, so
Did you hear that?
I don't feel confident enough that that's going to solve the challenges that have been identified, having done more research since that last meeting. I, I think there are ways that those challenges could be met. I think one of them is looking at an option like partnership working, and perhaps working with a business who has a financial need. And it means something.
Thank you all very much. We have a recommendation. Laura, if you want to put it on the screen, if people are aware of it. Anne, are you staying or going? Just asking for a ruling. You declared an interest. I'm just checking.
I don't think this has anything to do with the independent market. It doesn't.
Okay, recommendation before you. Can I have a proposal, please? Anita, second, Steve, can we vote?
You can only vote on what the recommendation is in front.
Yes. So, quick, grab your paper. Can I just say thank you to Lisa, Peter, Nick and Rachel, and to the author of 90% of this, Mel. A lot of, all right, 95%, a lot of work's gone into this, and it's much appreciated. Thank you for the presentation this evening. We turn to what Paul described as a light item agenda to finish the evening. Jane.
We don't take planning lightly. Thank you. So yes, I will be quick. It is just a verbal update, so you won't have seen a paper. Since the written update that was sent out in October, the planning committee have considered another 25 applications, and we've got another 20 coming up for our next meeting next week. The applications that were considered at the last meeting included an outline application made by Somerset Council for three houses at Cranmore View. We objected to that application due to the loss of the open space, which you can see in the top photograph there. Some of you might remember this as being one of the sites that was proposed as part of the Fair Homes sites, which was with Mendip District Council at the time and the Community Land Trust. They didn't take any of the sites forward due to the amount of objections that were received at the time. And unfortunately, this application from Somerset Council now is not for affordable homes, it is for market housing. We also looked at an application for 17 Bath Street, which is the former St John's ambulance building. This was for the conversion, the building to five flats. We also objected to this application for various reasons, including the lack of suitable fire escapes, the proximity of the flat windows to the entrance and exit of both the Bath Arms, which you can just see on the left-hand picture there, and the other side, the entrance to Castello's, mainly because if any residents who lived in the flats did complain, that would actually impact on the businesses. We were also concerned about the impact of the proposed roof lights on the front elevation because it's a listed building, and we were concerned about the loss of a town centre employment use. Neither of those applications have had decisions yet, so we can update you on those later. Just a bit about the application at Pack Saddle Way by Liv West for the erection of 74 dwellings. It's still waiting for a decision. It may go to Somerset Planning Meeting in January. Recently, the Valuation Office has assessed the viability report that was submitted with the application, and it concluded that the provision of 18% of affordable housing instead of the required 30 would be all that would be viable. As Liz, Liv West, our housing association, our expectation is that we would want to see more than 30% affordable housing. There've been a lot of objections to this application because of the loss of the open space, the lack of affordable housing, the loss of an impact on wildlife and biodiversity, quite a few other reasons. There is a lot of information with this application, so if anybody does want more detailed information, me and Catherine, or Catherine will be happy to talk you through it. We've also responded to Somerset Council consultation on a draft biodiversity net gain guidance note, which is more aimed at developers, and it provides guidance and advice on calculating and delivering biodiversity net gain in Somerset. In general, we agreed with most of the proposals, but we did want to see tighter controls to ensure that the biodiversity net gain is maintained in perpetuity. So that essentially, once somebody has put their biodiversity on another site, that site then doesn't turn around and get developed, etc. And again, if you, if you want to see a copy of the response, let me know. We also have another consultation that we're looking at from Historic England. They're consulting on new advice on climate change and historic building adaptation. The draft guidance is something that we've been waiting for, for a long time. As you can imagine, there's always a conflict with works listed buildings. Recently, we've seen a few applications for listed buildings who want to replace their windows or put on solar panels, and these have been refused because of the impact that they would have on the listed building. So it's actually great to see the guidance from Historic England, because the guidance aims to provide clarity and to support consistent decision-making for proposals to reduce carbon emissions and improve the energy efficiency of historic buildings whilst conserving their significance and ensuring they remain viable places to live in the future. So the deadline for that response is the 24th of December. And if anyone is interested in feeding into that, then let me know. It's only about 70 pages, so, you know. What next? Victoria Park toilets. The work is nearly finished. I took these, I took these photos today. They will be cleaned much more thoroughly than that before they're open. That's just the builders have been in and out with mud, water, etc. And also, there's a new drainage ditch going in around the back because there've been some problems with flooding. And a pole for the CCTV camera also went in today. And finally, come on, Laura. Yay! Oh, Laura! They're in. That's, that's all I'm going to say. They're for you, Martin, just for you. So any questions on planning in general or anything you've heard?
Questions for Jane, comments? Fiona.
I just wanted to say that the last two things, the two projects, from what I know, have been going on for a little while. And to have got them across the line is a massive success on both of them. So like, congratulations to everyone who did it, staff and councillors. I think Mark Doynton, who's not here, was leading on the, I think he was leading on both of them actually, and also staff members who have got them across the line.
I will pass that on to Catherine, who's done a lot of the work.
Yeah, she's done an amazing job.
Not on the toilet.
Martin has a point.
Are you acknowledging, are we acknowledging GWR for funding those signs?
Yes, although it was a very long time ago.
I still think they might appreciate knowing about it, because the goodwill that would engender might help other people get funding and sponsorship from them.
Absolutely. We'll send them.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Jane.
Thank you.
That was very light.
As promised.
According to Paul, I'm sure he's watching. Okay, that concludes the business for this evening. Just remains for me to say thank you to Laura, Sean and Rachel, and Peter for clerking tonight, and you for attending, members of the public, Somerset councillors and councillors. Our next meeting will be on the 17th of January, Wednesday, the 17th of January at 7pm, 2024. So I'd just like to wish everybody online and here in the room, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.